Good evening, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to recognize everybody in the audience and at home watching, and thank you for your attendance. The first item on the agenda is real call. We have everybody present except for Mayor Leach. He's excused for a medical issue. We will start with the invocation given by Councilman Adams and the pledge of allegiance given by Councilman Judd. If you would like to join us in that, please stand.
Father in heaven, we humbly come before this this evening. Father, as a council and as a community, we are grateful for our beautiful town, and we pray that that will be with us today as we discuss and talk about how we can better improve and go forward in our community. Father, we ask a blessing with those who've had a loss this day, that they may, that family may find the comfort and find the peace from thee. Father, we pray for that thou would please be with them in their loss at this time. Father, we're grateful for our city staff and their hard work and the love they have for our community, and we pray for their safety, and we pray for our first responders, that they have provided us safety in our in our community. Father, we are grateful for all of our blessings in the area we get to live and to enjoy, and we humbly say these things in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Adams and Councilman Judd. The next item on our agenda is called to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is within our jurisdiction may do so at this time. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person and shall be addressed to the city council as a whole and not to any individual member. Issues raised shall be limited to those within the jurisdiction of the city council pursuant to the Arizona Open Meeting Law. We have three individuals that have filled out forms that would like to speak at this time. If we can have David Walker come up first, please. Mr. Walker, as you approach the podium, please note that you need to give your name and your address for the record, and that way we'll be able to contact you if necessary.
My name is David Walker, 4800 South 28th Street, Cholo, Arizona. And tonight, I'd like to talk to the council members about Arizona Game and Fish and the stocking up Cholo Lake. I saw a YouTube video with Mayor Leach, and he so eloquently put Cholo Lake as the gem of the city of Cholo. Arizona Game and Fish has compiled extensive research and data that talks about Cholo Lake being able to be stocked year-round, specifically April through Labor Day weekend. Arizona Game and Fish, for some reason or another, is cutting back on their stockings. Up until 2022, the lake was receiving approximately 2,200 to 2,400 fish a month. Now it's receiving about 1,000 fish every four to five weeks. And Arizona Game and Fish last year ceased stocking at the end of July. Didn't get stocked August or September, which was the big Labor Day weekend. I contacted the White Mountain Independent Newspaper. A reporter has been assigned to it, and she's going to be investigating why Arizona Game and Fish is really cut back on their stocking program at Cholo Lake. I have a copy of this. I don't know if the city manager would like to copy this, all the extensive research and studies done at Cholo Lake for the last 20 years, leading up to their 2020 to 2030 tenure plan for the lake. And I appreciate your time and...
Hand that to the city clerk if you'd like.
Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Next person who has filled out a form is Dexter Cox. Mr. Cox as well, you'll need to give your name and your address for the record.
My name is Dexter Cox, and I'm also at 4800, or 4800 South 28th Street, number six. And I'd like to speak about what I consider to be a health hazard out at Cholo Lake that I noticed the second week of May of this year. I brought it to the attention of the people who you have under contract, I guess, to run the campground, to manage the campground. Said, something's wrong here, you need to clean this up. Went several weeks, nothing had happened yet, went back again, said you'd need to do something about this. Well, it's not our problem, it's game and fish. Well, game and fish doesn't have anything to do with that. Next time I went, they said, oh, it's the city's problem. Well, the city apparently didn't have anything to do, as far as I knew. The manager of the campground is that vendor you have out there that you have under contract. Well, I did find out that the city is responsible in the event that the equipment breaks down. I found that out yesterday when I, because last Sunday, I went the last time to the vendor out there, and they said, well, we can't do anything about it. And I said, well, I'm gonna go see the mayor and talk to the mayor, because this is a health hazard. And I'd like to just show this to you folks, if you just have a second. That station, dead guts laying around, all cleaning stations. Cleaning stations has electricity, it has a grinder in it, it acts like a garbage disposal unit. It has water that you can wash it down, wash the face down. The water shut off, the electricity shut off, and it's been in that condition for like, well, since the second week of May. That fish cleaning station is 10 to 15 feet from the first major campsite in that, in the campground. People pay money to be in that campground. That money goes to the vendor and to the city of Cholo. Now, I found out when I came to see the mayor yesterday at the office and found out about this meeting, one of the local employees of the city happened to be walking by when I was talking to one of the ladies, I think the city clerk lady. And he said, what are you, you're talking about the fish station? I said, yeah. He says, well, I'm just going to make a work order to take care of that, to fix it. Well, that means that the city has a responsibility to fix it if it's not working. But the city needs to find out that it's not working somewhere. There's no communication between you, the city, and that vendor out there, that that station is in the shape it's in. Somebody, somewhere, needs to increase the notification procedure or inspection of that station to see if it works as it should. Okay?
Turn that over to staff to follow up on that. The next person who is requested to speak is Beverly Hammer. Ms. Hammer, if you'll come forward.
My name is Beverly Hammer. I live in Cholo Bluff, 620 South Creekside Drive. I just wanted to commend the city on the good care they're taking care of our roads, not only the Deuce of Clubs and White Mountain Boulevard or White Mountain Road, but all the side roads. I've driven on more of them over the last couple of months, and, oh, they're in such great shape, and they're being striped and, you know, everything. And then you go down the road just a few miles, and it's like, I don't know what they're not doing, but the roads are horrible just a few miles out of Cholo. So, thank you for all you have done to keep our roads in good shape. We also used your, there's a link on the city site so you can report a pothole, and we did. There was one that was near the pickleball courts, and that pothole was fixed within three days. So, very impressive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hammer. I'm pleased to say that our leaders that are responsible for our roads are in the audience tonight, and so I appreciate that compliment to them. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time?
Good evening, council. My name is Curtis Fernaud, 621 South Mountain Pines Avenue. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but the lady just before me, when she mentioned the roads, I also have to commend the city for the roads. I know that the Deuce of Clubs and Highway 260 is ADOT, so that's the state, but still, I think Cholo does a better job than they do. But when she mentioned striping, there's a serious, serious issue when Highway 260 comes into Highway 60 by the Victorian Building in the Circle K. I've been a commercial driver for a long time. I haven't driven in a long time, but I still have my license. When you make the turn coming into Cholo, that circle hash mark hasn't been in there for a long time. I'm moving from Fairway Park into a house that we just built. I commute almost daily there, and I've been almost cut off several times, especially by the big rigs that have the long trailers. They can't see the line. They have to make a wide turn so that trailer stays where it's supposed to. When I make a turn into the lane, on the inside lane where I'm supposed to be, I've had to stop several times, or I'd get crushed. Somebody's gonna get hurt there. I went to ADOT and talked to a guy in there, and he says, that's not my, that's not my position to take care of, but here's a phone number for a guy in Holbrook. Well, I called that number. The number doesn't work, so I don't know what I have to do. I know this is an ADOT, a state problem, but if there's an accident on Deuce of Clubs or Highway 260 or White Mountain Road, there's city units there handling the accident. And I don't know, I haven't looked at the records to see if there's been an accident at that location, but I'd be surprised if there wasn't. I almost feel like going out there with my own marking and make those hash marks before somebody gets hurt. Somebody will get hurt there. And it would have been me if I wasn't watching who was turning in the outside lane, cutting me completely off. That's my spiel. Good evening.
Mr. Fernaud, the last staff to follow up with that. You know, ADOT's meeting in our community in the near future, so we'll follow up with that. The next item on the agenda is special events. At this time, before we move to that, I would particularly like to express condolences to the family of the young man that was passed away in a tragic accident at Cholo Lake yesterday, and express appreciation to all the first responders in our community that followed up on that case and recovered the body. We know that's not an easy job, particularly when it doesn't come out as good as we would like it to. But also, I'd like to express condolences to a number of longtime citizens, the families in our community, the Ellen Adams family, the Freddie Laura family, Ron Wasson family, Brad Baker, Donna Carlow, Dick Barrett, and Mary Lou Dewitt. These all are members of our community for years and years and years, and we express our condolences to their families, and if we could, for just a moment, have a moment of silence for them. On a happier note, I'm happy to recognize Floyd Gilmore tonight, and if we could have Floyd come up and his wife Janice as well, just so that we know that, Janice, you've been there right next to him all these years, 50 years of service to our community, and I know it's actually more than that, but Floyd's finally gonna take the time to retire and enjoy life a little bit. But at this time, we're gonna turn the time over to Rick Austin. You can come up, Rick.
Floyd, when I first came to work here nine years ago, Fort Carpenter and Madder Miho asked me, hey, we got somebody that we want you to see, want you to meet. And I met you that very first day that I came to work here. And on behalf of the Public Works Department, we would like to thank you for everything that you did for us. You saved us a lot of time searching for water lines at the full hollow of water system and tons of graves out of their cemetery, and you did the extra to make it look really nice. I was told that you're a man of your word, and no matter what you say, you're gonna do. In the last nine years, I want you to know that that was true in my heart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Floyd, would you like to say anything at this time?
I wish you guys hadn't have done this. I can't take all of the praise. I have to acknowledge my wife, our kids. They've helped me dug graves from the time they were big enough to walk, my grandkids, the city workers out there too, whoever the mainest people were, a lot of times they helped me. Here lately, it's been, oh, my blooming mind, Denny, what's his first name?
Lauren.
Lauren, Lauren Denny, and, oh, come on, mind. Well, anyway, one of his helpers that helped me, and my grandkids are still doing it. Just the other day, Tori, that's Justin, and Tracy's daughter, helped me dig Mary Lou's grave. So, they're still doing it. And I guess I really haven't retired, because I've got some more to do. Some of the old timer that's just insisting that I do it. So, I appreciate it, really do.
You've done an amazing job for the citizens of Cholo and for our community. You've taken care of our cemetery and made it look beautiful for over 50 years, and we appreciate that so much. We have a small token of appreciation for you. If the council would like to present this first item, like we hope this keeps you warm.
I don't wear a coat.
You come and get that.
No ticket.
Have a little plaque here, it has a backhoe. Yes. It says, "The city of Cholo honors Floyd Gilmore for 50 years of service." And from the bottom of my heart, Floyd, I appreciate you, and I know the rest of the council does too, and thank you. The next item on the agenda is recognition of Lauren Clark. We'll turn the time over to Chief Provost for that recognition.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council. First of all, thank you for the opportunity for us to recognize an outstanding employee. On Thursday, July 13th, the Arizona Chapter of the Association of Public Safety Communication Officials and the National Emergency Number Association, APCO NINA, awarded Cholo's Regional Communications Center dispatcher Lauren Clark as Dispatcher of the Year for the State of Arizona. Lauren has worked for Cholo Police Department since April of 2020. She recently completed her bachelor's degree in homeland security and emergency management and is entering a master's program this fall. Lauren is a CTO, which is a communications training officer, and has been instrumental in helping train new dispatchers. She also tested for and was selected as a Special Response Team dispatcher and works as one of the department's phlebotomists. In selecting dispatcher Clark for this prestigious award, her peers recognized her performance, which included a recent lifesaving award, her working over 314 hours of overtime in the last year, and the testimonial of officers on the street, which included, Lauren has always displayed her confidence as a dispatcher and never shies away from helping others. She brings a sense of calm with her, and it's obvious she truly cares about the officers she dispatches for. Lauren's selection for this award was made by an independent panel, and she was recognized by APCO this last week at their annual banquet. Congratulations, Lauren, on your achievement in being recognized as one of the top performers in your profession. I would like to add to that, council knows this, but for our members in the audience and those who are watching, in addition to this fantastic award, in the last 24 months, the city of Cholo has received, the last 24 months, we've had the Officer of the Year, the Animal Control Officer of the Year, and the Dispatcher of the Year for the State of Arizona, which I think is testimonial to the outstanding employees we have, and it's also a testimonial to your support of our employees and the commitment to excellence. Thank you.
We know that's not an easy job, being a dispatcher. I know that it's not something that I could do, but it's really a special talent that you have, and we appreciate you being part of our team. We know that it's in your blood, being a community member and representing our government, and we appreciate you. Is there any other council members that have anything to say? Any comments? Thank you. Thanks again. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar, and if you'll bear with me, we have quite a list tonight. We have consideration of resolution number R 202317, modifying, modification one to the memorandum of agreement for the federal land access program for Joe Tank Road. Consideration of acceptance of West McNeil roadway improvements. Consideration of acceptance of the fifth and sixth place sewer main replacement. Consideration of authorization to purchase a crane truck. Consideration of award of purchase of a 440 backhoe loader. Consideration of award of purchase of a mini track loader. Consideration of award of purchase of a ground master 4100D mower. Consideration of approval of third lease amendment with General Services Administration for the Transportation Security Administration at the airport. Consideration of approval of exchange agreement with the Experimental Aircraft Association, Chapter 586. Consideration of acceptance of donation of the Cholo Fire Engine Number One from the Historical Society. Consideration of purchase of police vehicles. Consideration of acceptance of water storage tank 8B. Consideration of acceptance of final reports and maps for the Jaques Dam spillway study. Consideration of acceptance of the City Hall roof project that was a redo. Consideration of acceptance of the city park restroom and minutes of the Cholo City Council meeting on June 20th, 23. You tell we just passed our budget and we're ready to get things moving for our next budget year. Are there any items that the council would like to have removed from the consent calendar at this time?
I pull one. Do we have, is there one on here that I could pull that makes Ryan Hall have to come up and talk in front of us? Because I know how much he appreciates doing that. If there's not one to be pulled, I'll ask, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'd like to pull 7A and just have that, some clarification on it.
And I'll move to approve the consent calendar minus item 7A.
Wait a second. Councilman Adams, all of us in favor, see I?
Aye.
All of us opposed? There being none, the motion carries unanimously?
Yes, 7A, I just, I was reading over it, and I just, I'd like to ask, change some questions about, if I can, about that Joe Tank Road. If you can give us some insight of what's going on with the grant and everything else.
Absolutely. No problem. You want me to run through staff summary?
Yeah, just go through it, just, you know...
Little update?
Yes.
Okay, so we were awarded this flap grant, this federal lands access program grant a few years ago, I think back in 2000, or 2020, I mean. The original scope of the work was just to improve Joe Tank Road, about 0.3 miles, which is from the highway, about 0.3 miles in, which got you about halfway to that Los Cabos trailhead. We were awarded that grant, I believe the original award was $1.3 million. We worked with the federal lands group, the federal highways group up in Colorado on the grant, and they said, hey, there's more funding available, would you want to apply for the remainder of the piece now as well? And we went ahead and asked for the remainder of the second 0.3 miles to get 0.6 all the way to the trailhead, and that was approved, I think about a year and a half ago, and that made the total cost go up to about $2 million for the project. Since then, design's been complete. These federal projects, they're designed way in advance, and it takes multiple years to get to construction. There's a long timeframe in these projects. This one's slated to be in the FY '24 budget, which would be next summer, is they're aiming for construction. In that time, though, of course, the past three years, prices have gone up on almost everything. So, the way that this agreement, this grant, works is they have to do a revised estimate at the 100% plans, and then based on that revised estimate, we have to pay our match portion. We agreed to pay 20% match for this project, but with such an escalation, a new estimate of about $3.7 million for the project, they said, how about you pay 20% match on that original agreement of $2 million? And anything above that, you just pay 5%. And it'll work with us on that, because they knew it was such a large increase in impact. Unfortunately, we do have to pay that match, which increases the, our match quantity by $97,000 for a total match of $522,000 for the work. But right now, like I said, this federal project is slated about $3.7 million. That's ribbon curbs on both sides, 28-foot-wide asphalt roadway from the highway all the way to the trailhead. And that's where we're at today. We have to revise the agreement to show that revised match, and then there will be hoping to bid that later in the year, probably in the wintertime.
Thank you, Shane. I just wanted people to understand, you know, that we started this project and some things happened, and then we had to go back in. And the good thing about your, the rate of 20% down to 5%, anything over that $3 million, so I like that. My other concern, and it's not a concern, but when we first did Joe Tank Road, when Martinson built some property there, he was gonna take care of some of that, and then we were gonna get the grant to take care of that. So, when we match all that stuff up with what the specs are for this, is the beginning of that gonna have to be all ripped up and start all over again, or do we have good material all the way up to that right now?
No, he posted, I believe he posted a bond to do that work, knowing that this project was coming down the pipeline, and we held that bond for a few years now. And now that this project is coming to fruition, it's gonna be the next fiscal year, I think we're gonna release that and go ahead and construct this whole thing in one project.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate that very much.
Do I have a motion on item 7A?
I'll make a motion on item 7A on the consent calendar.
Motion, is there a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any dissent? There being none, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. That was a long consent. Okay, the next item on the agenda is new business. We have a public hearing to consider ordinance number 202304, amending the zoning ordinance of the city, changing the zoning on a portion of property described as APN 212-03-159X from the current PUD planned unit development, zoning to C2, which is general commercial, zoning to allow for all uses as outlined in the C2 zoning district. Katie, welcome. We haven't seen you for a while.
At the July 6, 1993, City Council meeting, the City Council approved ordinance number 364 to rezone the subject property to PUD, which is planned unit development, from C2, general commercial, to allow for the development of the White Mountain Vacation Village Development. Conceptual master plan for White Mountain Vacation Villa indicated that this property was to be utilized as festival area. Steve Kallopsa of SL Property Investments LLC has submitted a request to rezone a portion of APN 212-03-159X from PUD to C2 to allow for uses as outlined in the C2 zoning district. The property parcel is approximately 8.7 acres in size, and the applicant has indicated they wish to rezone just under 11,000 square feet of property to allow for commercial uses. The applicant already owns the property to the west, including the Culvers, as well as the property located to the south. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting on February 7, 27, 2023, and no neighbors attended the meeting. During the public hearing of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on July 11, 2023, several neighboring property owners were in attendance and voiced concerns regarding the lack of a secondary access to the property and access onto South White Mountain Road from Evergreen Lane. There'll be access to both White Mountain, South White Mountain Road and Evergreen Lane from the subject property. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted four to zero to approve the request. Chairman Barlow declared a conflict of interest, and Commissioners Lewis and Wilson were absent to approve the submitted request and forward this recommendation to the City Council, subject to the specified conditions. After reviewing the standard review findings of facts, the applicant and the City of Cholo land and zoning ordinances and the City of Cholo general plan, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of Zone Change Request 60503120 submitted by Steve Kallopsa of SL Property Investments LLC to rezone a portion of APN 212-03-159X from PUD, which is planned unit development, to C2, which is general commercial, to allow for uses as outlined in the C2 zoning district, subject to staff recommendations, and forward this recommendation to the City Council. One, all development should comply with all applicable federal, state, and local requirements, including ADOT building code and fire codes. Staff, as well as applicant's representative, is available for questions.
Thank you, Katie. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this matter? Any none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the City Council. Council, do you have any questions or comments? This is the public hearing, we'll move to item number 8B. By unanimous consent, since everybody has a copy, we'll ask the city clerk.
North Range 22 east of the Hila and Salt River Meridian, Navajo County, Arizona. More particularly described as a portion of AP number 212-03-159X from PUD planned unit development to C2 general commercial to allow for all uses as outlined in the C2 general commercial zoning district. Thank you.
Move to adopt ordinance number 2023-04.
We have a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Resting none, so the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, city clerk. Thank you, Ms. Becto-Carter, being here. Next item on the agenda is consideration of ordinance, excuse me, that was the last item, consideration of requests submitted by property owner to annex a portion of AP numbers 212-11-002 and 212-11-003A, number P-1523, Ms. Attencio.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Cory Frampton, on behalf of the Cholo Lake LLC, has approached the city requesting annexation of a portion of AP numbers 21211002 and 21211003A into the City of Cholo for construction of a road in a proposed development of Lakeshore Village. Cholo Lake LLC owns said portions of the parcels. The proposed annexation consists of approximately 0.37 of an acre. The proposed property for annexation is triangular shaped. The property proposed to be annexed into the City of Cholo is contiguous on two sides of corporate limits of the City of Cholo for at least 300 feet. Should council wish to proceed with this annexation, a blank petition would be filed with Navajo County, and within 30 days from the date of filing, the property owner would be notified, and the public hearing would be held before council. After the 30-day period, signatures would be obtained, the signed petition would be filed, and council would be presented with an ordinance for annexation.
Any concerns, questions, comments from the council? The motion on this item?
Move to authorize staff to file a blank petition with Navajo County, the Navajo County Recorder for this proposed annexation.
Second, Councilman Adams, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any dissent? There being none, the motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is consideration of Resolution Number R 2023-16, establishing street light improvement district secondary property tax levy for fiscal year 2024, $25,000.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. On June 20, 2023, the City Council held a public hearing on the fiscal year 2024 final budget and the secondary tax levy contained in this action. The property taxes collected within the streetlight improvement district are utilized to pay the utility costs of the street and park lights within the district. Based upon current assessed valuations, the proposed tax levy of $225,000 will remain unchanged at the rate of 0.1401 cents per 100 of assessed valuation. At this rate, a home with an assessed value of $150,000 will pay approximately $17.86 annually. Staff recommends adopting Resolution Number R 2023-16, establishing the streetlight improvement district secondary property tax levy for fiscal year 2024 at $225,000, and I'm available for any questions.
If I remember correctly in the budget, we did not increase the amount or the rate this year.
We have not increased the rate in the last, I believe, five years. It has remained the same.
Adams? I move to adopt Resolution Number R 2023-16 to establish a streetlight improvement district secondary property tax levy for fiscal year 2024 for $225,000.
Councilman Clark, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any dissent? There being none, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Ms. Billby. Next item on the agenda is consideration of award of construction contract for Nicholas and McNeil Acres Subdivision Roadway Improvement, City of Cholo Project Number R 5723. Mr. Hemisaw.
Evening. City's fiscal year 2023 capital improvement plan budget included $455,000 for a roadway improvement project labeled Nicholas subdivision and an additional $430,000 for a roadway improvement project labeled McNeil Acres. Both subdivisions are completing upgrades to the underground infrastructure, and now the roadway improvements have been scheduled. The work includes reconstruction of about 10,000 linear feet of roadway, including portions of Sixth Place, South Fifth Place, East Mills, East Nicholas, East Owens, South Eighth Street, South Ninth Place, East Reed Head, and East Stratton. The work includes, but is not necessarily limited to, the pulverization of approximately 25,000 square yards of existing asphalt roadway, recycling and mixing the existing asphalt millions into the existing base, subgrade preparation and compaction, reshaping the roadway grade, installing a new asphalt pavement overlay, reestablishing roadway shoulders, and adjusting water valves and manholes. The two projects were combined into one due to vicinity to each other and to reduce redundant construction costs. City engineering staff designed the project with a construction cost estimate of $937,000. The project was publicly bid in accordance with statutory requirements with the following results. Western Grade LLC, $1,66,297.0, surface contracting at $1,185,485, and Perkins Cinders Incorporated at $1,312,163.13. Due to rising construction costs, the excess funding to construct the project will come from the capital carryovers in the fiscal FY '23 budget. Staff recommends awarding the construction contract for Nicholas and McNeil Acres Subdivision Roadway Improvement, City of Cholo Project R 5723, to Western Grade LLC in an amount not to exceed that $1,66,297, and authorize the associated budget transfers. The bid tabulation for the work is attached, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Shane, when are you guys looking at starting construction for this?
This will probably start, I heard, after talking to the contractor, in six to eight weeks. We are well schooled, we'll be back in session here in just a few weeks. I like to remind my kids every day. So we'll have to work with them and really make sure the buses can get in and out of there and create a window for them while this is getting done.
Thank you.
And is this mostly clay pipe or?
Well, the clay pipe has been replaced, has all been repaired. So the McNeil Acres and Fifth and Sixth Sewer, we just accepted that tonight, and that was the last kind of sewer work in that area. All that clay pipe has been replaced, it's all plastic PVC sewer and better, new manholes, and the water's in good condition in that area as well.
Thank you.
This is one of the oldest subdivisions in the community, so nice to have all that infrastructure upgraded and getting these roads back in order. Okay, good.
Make a motion. Move to award the construction contract for the Nicholas, McNeil Acres Subdivision Roadway Improvement, City of Cholo Project Number R 5723, to Western Grade LLC in an amount not to exceed $1,66,297, and authorize associated budget transfers.
Man Adams, all those in favor, say aye. Any dissent? Seeing none, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hemisaw. Okay, the next item is consideration, it must be the Shane Hemisaw period of the agenda.
Sorry.
Consideration of award of professional services contract for design of Wolford Road Reconstruction Project, City of Cholo Project Number R 1424.
The city has been awarded about $1.3 million in federal direct spending to reconstruct Wolford Road from East Whipple to State Route 260. Scope of work includes removing the existing roadway section, installing GeoGrid reinforcement, installing a new stronger roadway section, and replacing pavement markings. The federal funding assigned to these projects requires additional scope during the design phase, such as environmental clearances and geotechnical reviews. City staff solicited a proposal from Ironside Engineering to perform the necessary design services. Scope of the proposal includes conducting the required project survey and mapping, repairing construction design documents, completing necessary environmental clearance submittals, and completing the final budget specifications prior to ADOT conducting the bidding. Proposed cost of these services is $134,700. A detailed scope of the services is attached. Staff recommends awarding the professional services contract for design of Wolford Road Reconstruction Project, City of Cholo Project Number R 1424, to Ironside Engineering Survey in an amount not to exceed that $134,700. That scope of services is attached, I'm available for any questions.
Shane, this is the design. When are we expecting the construction to actually go out and get and start?
We had our first meeting with the ADOT project manager. Our goal, our schedule, and our plan is to have this being constructed next summer. They say that's ambitious with these federal projects that usually get drawn out, but with the simplicity of the scope, we're kind of skipping one of the submittals to ADOT, we're hoping that we can still land that design by the end of the year, early January, February, and have it bid ready by early spring. But this is a federal project, so ADOT will have to do the bidding for it, they do the construction oversight. We were there as well, but they have to oversee this pot of money.
Of the project, are we anticipating that the road will be widened with shoulders?
At this time, no, we're not going to do any widening of the roadway. It's just a reconstruct of the asphalt sections deteriorating right now.
Mr. Hemisaw, is, well, is there a plan for there to be some sort of sidewalks or walking path or something along this portion of the road? I know that I've been traveling that most of my life, and it seems like I see people walking on that, probably what the Vice Mayor was alluding to with the widening of it. It seems like there's a necessity there for some pedestrian improvements, I guess, so.
There's actually a multi-use path in our five-year CIP plan for this corridor. It's not funded at this time, but it's in our five-year plan to do so. This roadway is designed to be more of a, kind of a major or a minor arterial and just kind of a through traffic. You'll see, that's why it has the ribbon curbs, there's no vertical curb and sidewalk on those at this time. That's why the, I think the approach is to put a multi-use path along the side of there at some point to get up pedestrian access through that corridor. The right-of-way is tight, it doesn't have a whole lot of access right-of-way in there to do that, but that isn't our plan.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion.
I'll move to award the professional service contract for the design of the Wolford Road Reconstruction Project, City of Cholo Project Number R 1424, to Ironside Engineering and Surveying Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $134,700 and no cents.
Man Hatch, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I see none, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hemisaw. Next item on the agenda is summary of current events. Mr. Hatch, do you have anything?
I'd just like to thank staff for the Fourth of July was wonderful, they did a good job, and I think the parade went real well. And on a side note, kind of, I also wanted to say to Floyd Gilmore, who I've known all my life, I wanted to say thanks for his hard work all these years. Floyd is an amazing man, he was my scout leader as a kid, and I just always looked up to him and respected him, and I'm happy he can hopefully enjoy his retirement.
Well, I'd also like to say, yeah, I really appreciate Floyd and his wife, they're amazing people, some of the best people that we have in Cholo. I've seen Floyd, I've known him for several years, and I've seen Floyd after he'll dig a grave. He'll sit quietly and reverently on his backhoe, and it's neat to watch the respect that he has as he digs a grave, that's something he doesn't take lightly. I really appreciate him. Also, I'd like to just thank the staff and everyone that's participating in all the roadwork. It seems like it always is on one side of my house, so I'm right in the middle of it usually, I think they're targeting me or something, but it really, we do have some of the best roads in Cholo, and people have mentioned that earlier. I appreciate you saying that, and I appreciate our staff to keep our roads nice for our city.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to thank everybody, thanks to the Public Works and Park and Recreation, Aquatic Center, and all the lifeguards for everything they did on the Fourth of July Parade, and also at the fireworks. Everybody was hustling up, and they made it the best that we could ever have, and the fireworks went off great with, so I want to thank Timber Mesa Fire Department for setting off the fireworks out here. I have people I had people from Tucson sitting next to us, and they're going, we come up here just because it's the best fireworks we ever seen in the state of Arizona. So it says a lot to our fire department, because I believe this is still one of the fireworks that's led off by, we, we light them, it's now electronic, shut off that way, so it's, each individual one is, is lit off. So, second thing is, I attended the Sandlot Mud Run this last Saturday, what a fun. If, if nobody's been there to see the little kids running that mud, I have to tell you a story about, I was sitting underneath the tree watching this little kid, and the mom runs down, and he's, he can't be more than four, and he looks at that mud, and he looks at his mom, and he just folded his arms like, I ain't going in that. And then she's, come on, no, no, and he turned around and walked back up, so, but I think some of it was because the parents said, never get out there and play in mud, and, and now they want you to play in mud, it's like, they have no idea which one they want to do. But it, just see their face expressions and everything else was great to, to see that. So, and, and attended a Mills and Wheels, not Mills and Wheels, but Main Street Board Meeting for the whole council. We have a fine lady over there that does all our stuff for us, for Main Street, and so she put everything together here that I'm going to talk about. So if you guys like to have a copy, it'd be great to keep you guys on your toes about what's going on. Here's a couple more. So, coming up, we got the Battle of the Bands and Food Vans, that's September second here in Sholo at Frontier Park from nine, nine o'clock, noon to nine PM. And as, as you can see, there's, there's all kinds of bands and attractions, you'll be able to vote for your own food van and the bands, and it's an all-day thing, and it is so much fun. You'll be hearing all kinds of different bands that we have in town, and then also all the food that's, that's out there. Also, then October twenty eighth, we have the Trunk a Treat, and that will be here in Sholo, and that's from two to eight. We'll give you some more of this information later on. Santa's Workshop on the Canacane Lane on December second and third, that's at the Elks Lodge. And save some dates, Deuce's Wild Kick Up Your Boots, it's the casino night at the Elks Lodge, and that's in May of next year. So we have some things already planned out for the rest of this year. Plus, if you haven't attended the Farmer's Market Art Walk, it's unbelievable, we have full, full vendors there, it's been going great, and we've just been having a good time with different people and just laughing and joking whenever you walk down through there. Next thing is, it was brought to the council's attention about the Navajo Peace Officers' Memorial and putting a committee together to maintain that and keep it clean, and I told you we'd get back to this, and we come up with that committee, and so we, we did come up with a committee and voted on it through Main, Main Street. John Jarrett's on that committee, Ron Gates is on the committee, Kevin Beebe is on that committee, and Mike Jones is on the committee. So that, they're in charge of keeping the Peace Officer Memorial nice and clean, and then also the Veterans Memorial right next to it, and if any other memorials come in, then we'll be doing, taking care of those too. Last thing, today I got to, had the privilege and honor to go up to Holbrook and, and say goodbye to retiring county manager Glenn Kephart, and got to talk to him and, and have some laughs and, and some tears going on for a great guy that's leaving the county and has done a great thing for this county and for us down here in the City of Sholo. So I just had the privilege and honor to say goodbye and, and enjoy his retirement life. Thank you.
I too would like to thank our staff for all the wonderful work they do, from our first responders, Timber Mesa, the police department, Parks and Recreation, Public Works, I mean, it just, the list goes on and on and on. The Fourth of July was certainly, I think, one of the best parades that we've had in a long time, and it sure was a long one, and I too had friends and family visiting from the valley, and they were just amazed with how the City of Sholo celebrates our freedom and how much effort we put into recognizing those that put their life on the line for us. And I'd like to also recognize the police department after the fireworks, jamming all those people down into that small area and then trying to get those thousands of cars out of there in a timely manner, they did an amazing job, and thank you for that. This is all I have.
Karen Council, we appreciate the staff and all they did on the Fourth of July, and I think everything turned out well. Mr. Farno, got a notice for you that might be beneficial to what you were saying tonight. This Friday at nine AM, the Arizona State Transportation Board is meeting right here in the council chambers at nine AM. And I'm sure they have a call to the public where you can address your concern to them if you're available, so invite everybody to attend that. They only come around to Sholo about every couple of years, I think, so it's a good opportunity for us to express concerns that we might have with state highways in our area. Just reminder, I think Councilman Alsop already said it, but we have our Main Street Weekly Farmer's Market that continues every Saturday through September. Invite you to come and view that. And as you know, we got a lot of public works projects going on. We got night work that continues on Sholo Lake Road intersection, we got grading and curb work being done on East Hall and Eleventh Street, the bridge replacement project. East Hall will be open at nights and on the weekends while the work continues on that project. Slurry Sil is just about completed, and the pavement markings are scheduled to be completed Wednesday and Thursday of this week. Then we've started on the Parkview Subdivision Waterline project. We appreciate everybody's patience as we, as we make these improvements.
Next item is schedule of meetings, do we have any that we need to schedule at this So at this time, I'll adjourn this meeting.